I'll start with real call to my left with Councilman Wimmer.
Paul Wimmer, City Council.
Mike Warrington, City Council Member.
Jody O'Katie, City Council Member.
Ronnie Price, Mayor.
Homer, City Council.
Phil Hamilton, City Council Member.
Bub Buchanan, Police Chief.
Rick Lyons, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
Julie Boyd, Interim Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Mike Roosevelt, Deputy Chief.
Matt Kane, Director of Finance.
JT Klaus, City Attorney.
Dana Engstrom, City Clerk.
Les Mangas, Director of Community Development.
Jolene Graham, Assistant City Administrator.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator.
At this time, Rick Newbauer, Lead Police and Fire Chaplain is going to lead us in invocation. How you doing, sir?
Doing good, thank you, sir. Would you bow your heads with me, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather tonight as citizens of a community that looks forward to hearing from their people and listening and reacting accordingly. We are thankful tonight as school begins another season. We pray for the safety of our children, our teachers, the streets as kids head back to school. We thank you again for another community that supports the school district well. We ask that you would just hear our voices tonight, that they would be fall on receptive ears and hearts and minds, and that we always remember that we come our way together as a stronger community when we listen to one another and care for each other. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. If you would join us in the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna, if the council don't mind, I'm gonna move the proclamations to right now. So, is that right? Okay. Phil, please.
Whereas the Andover High School girls swimming team won the 2025 5-1A state championship on Saturday, May 24, 2025, at the Capitol Federal Notorium in Topeka. And whereas, the meet had all 10 swimmers advance to at least one final to help score 304 points, the most in a 5-1A state meet since 2016. And whereas, the team was led by seniors Mary Griffin, Kirsten Elliott, and Sophia Mandanis. And whereas, Mary Griffin achieved a lifelong goal by breaking the state meet record in a 100-yard backstroke with a time of 54.88 seconds, besting a record that stood for nine years and further contributed to another record-breaking performance in the 200-yard medley relay. And whereas, the team is coached by Bethany Bastian, who said, "You go through cycles of seniors and you always remember them, but a group like this doesn't come around very often. It's their speed, their work ethic, their determination, their confidence. It just sets the tone for the whole program." Therefore, I, Phil Hamilton, with the City Council assembled in regular session on the 12th day of August 2025, hereby proclaim August 13, 2025, Andover High School Girls' Swim Team Day.
Joni.
Congratulations, ladies.
Congratulations.
And now can I have Colt Farrow.
Hey, Coach Doug.
Whereas Andover Central High School student Colt Farrow won the 5A individual golf championship on Wednesday, May 28, 2025. And whereas, the tournament was held at the Emporia Municipal Golf Course. And whereas Colt received a two-day score of 131 and is coached by Doug Snyder. And whereas, 64 was the lowest round and 131 was the lowest 36-hole score shot by Kansas, any Kansas high school golfer at a state tournament. And whereas Doug said he played about as well as he could play. It was just really impressive watching him in that situation with all of that pressure to be able to zone everything out and get in a groove like that. Whereas Colt said, "I have put in hard work and I'm grateful to represent my school, but this isn't the end of it for me. It's just going to make me work even harder now to get ready for next year and this summer. Winning state was always a big goal of mine, so winning is definitely a surreal feeling." Therefore, I, Jody O'Katie, with the City Council assembled in regular session on the 12th day of August 2025, hereby proclaim August 14, Colt Farrow Individual Golf Champion Day. Congratulations.
Good job, Colt.
That's impressive.
All right, onward and upward. At this time, did everything? All right, let's also do the awards. Red Cross Blood Drive Battle of the Badges, and Tammy Kuhn is going to talk to us about this. Wow, look at that.
Thank you. I'm honored to be here and thrilled to celebrate the conclusion of the Second Annual Andover Community Battle of the Badges Blood Drive. This year, we decided to do something different and hold the blood drive on the same day at both the Police Department and the Fire Department to see if we could increase our collections, and it worked. Last year, we collected 30 units, and this year, we collected 81 units. So, those 81 units could impact up to 243 lives. So, made a big difference holding those drives at two different locations on the same day. So, I just want to remind everyone that it's important to remember that each donation wasn't just a vote for a team. It's a lifeline for someone in need. So, the Fire Department ended with 44 votes and the Police Department with 37, so it was close. In closing, I just want to thank the Fire Department and the Police Department for keeping the challenge meaningful, the donors for their generosity, and of course, the Andover community for showing what it means to save lives together. So, if you don't mind helping me congratulate the Fire Department.
Tammy, I think it's odd that Chief Russell isn't here tonight, but can you tell me how many gallons he give? Because he might have, he might have given a few gallons to get the Fire Department over the top, don't look.
All right. Well, thank you all so much.
Thank you for what you do. We appreciate you. And one more, Department of Transportation Safety Award, and Troy Wells. How you doing, Mr. Wells?
Hi, I'm Troy Wells. I'm the law enforcement liaison for the state of Kansas for this area. I'm also retired from the Southern County Sheriff's Office. So, but I wanted to give the chief and lieutenant here a shout out for their excellent performance. They did this last year. Some of the programs that we do is like booster to belts, safety breaks at the elementary schools. We also, they did also enforcements like on speeding work zones and our STEP program, which is the Special Traffic Enforcement Program, which includes safe arrival around Thanksgiving, New Year's, taking down DUIs, and then click or ticket and you drunk, you drive, you lose. They turned in some real good numbers on stops and everything. One thing I always try to tell law enforcement officers, I would like to see you stop everybody for anything and everything. Mainly, I'd rather take five minutes of your time up than you've been involved in a wreck down the road and I'm up there for an hour or two. So, safety is first. So, and we don't have to give tickets to everybody. Some people just be educated by just talking to them. And they do this in the schools too with their SROs, so very happy for them. This year, on their traffic safety award, as always, they've got the platinum award, so the highest they can get. So. Let you know, a couple of years ago, we screwed up the plaque number. This year, we got, yeah, so it's not the right year on there, but they're going to get the right year, so.
And then is this the 10th year in a row?
I'm gonna have this, Troy, I think 15, 14, 15.
Something like that.
We need a new building because our wall is getting too full. Real quick, too, Lieutenant Hardy has done the bulk of the work, but it's the officers that are out there day to day. A lot of people complain about people speeding certain areas. And just like Troy said, it's about stopping the people and preventing accidents. Don't care about the tickets as much as we do, but we're going to prevent accidents. And Lieutenant Hardy's worked really hard this last year to make sure that we continue this tradition of getting these awards. So, it's not about the awards, it's about keeping our citizens safe. So, please, slow down and avoid school buses, school zones, all that stuff. You got to make sure that we're doing our part, okay? Thank you.
All right, onward and upward. Sorry, I've had attention issues. My laptop's acting up, so it is what it is. And Margaret, I told you I would pay my membership.
Yeah, sure.
Man, wow. All right. Public forum, at this time, I open the floor for public forum. If you would, state your name and within reason, keep it short, all right? Anybody?
Yeah, come to the podium, state your name and address.
This is fancier than we used to have. Good evening, Mayor, Council staff members. My name is Caroline Hale. I reside at 831 Framerton Street in Andover. And I'm here this evening to address the council about your recent decision to double your compensation. It's pretty shocking, actually, for me to hear that, as I had thought that in 2019, we had put that compensation at a really nice amount for people. It's my understanding that in 2021, the council considered quadrupling, and I guess that did not happen, but that in 2024, there was a 15% increase. So, then to hear the very next year, people want to double it, it was just pretty shocking to me. And I'm not someone who doesn't have an understanding of what you all do. So, I know the general public might not, but I certainly do. And I also certainly can tell you that in 15 years, your obligation has not increased any more than the people who were serving 15 years before you. The time and effort that went into it, you have three regular meetings a month. Two of them, of course, are this voting membership and the workshop. And it's my understanding that your compensation for those meetings is $86.25 per meeting, and that you have another, I think it's $3,018 on top of that per year that you receive for stipend. And that varies, I understand. I never really understood what all that was about. At some point, I think we were being compensated for the fact that we had a cell phone and that we had to have internet connection, and of course, most of us all had that anyway. So, that's a very nice compensation. But just to give you some background, most people, I have been surprised because I have been contacted by people, they didn't even realize we had compensation, or excuse me, that there was compensation for people that serve on the council. I think they confuse it, think about school board, library board, planning commission, site plan, all the other committees that are out there doing things in the community. Like Senior Center is here, and I know they have a Board of Trustees that puts in a good amount of time, but they're not compensated. HOA board members are not compensated. And having served on an HOA for 19 years, I can tell you that takes a lot of time. But again, not as much time as you all give. I would say that you're giving about 10 hours a month if you're a council member. Required is only three meetings. They're typically no longer than two hours, if that long. And you have liaison commitments. And I know you have to prepare, look over your materials. You don't have to do the research or the work for it. The staff, excellent staff does all of that and gives it to you for review, and you do make the decisions, and those decisions are important. I'm not belittling what you do. I understand what you do and I appreciate it. The way this came about with, I know that you, your mayor obviously wouldn't, didn't want to put it on an agenda, which is his choice, and I understand what you did last week, or two weeks ago, is legal and all of that, but it just really hit citizenship wrong, I can tell you that. So, just to give a little bit of background, my husband first served on this council in 1997 and was compensated $680 a year. I, I'm not going to go on my first year because it's crazy that I have all these tax returns, but I looked up my 2010 tax return. The W2 said I earned $2,026. That did not change all the way up to 2019. One year, my son had heart surgery and we were gone for two weeks in Texas, so I missed a meeting. Did not bother me at all that I was deducted for missing that meeting. That is your primary responsibility. When you're not here and you're not voting, you're not representing the people. So, I did not like the fact that you all did away with that. Also, it seems silly to be talking about wanting to be compensated 26-pay periods like your employees. If this was not about money with you all, it sure seemed like everything was about money as I watched that meeting. And I went back over and read everything that went on in your workshop and listened to your meeting. And my takeaway from it was that it was about money. I appreciate the fact that a couple of you will never even benefit by what you did. I also appreciate the fact I've seen on social media, Phil, for example, does a really great job of communicating with the public. That's not required. Phil's putting that effort out there on his own. We are not required. I heard comments about GAD buttons, and I'm like, good Lord, no one is making you buy GAD buttons. Just some of the comments I heard were disturbing. I actually felt like it was pretty much suggested that you all are doing so much more than councils before you. I also found that pretty offensive. This town hasn't changed like that. In comparison to the city of Derby, your salaries are much greater. The city of Derby is a much larger city, a class, city of the first class. We're still the city of the second class. It just seems incomparable. I looked at other cities, and I'm looking at Gardner, Kansas, which is quite a bit larger than Andover, growing like Andover, I can assure you. And their compensation doesn't meet what you all are getting. And again, you can, you had every right to do that. It's just that I don't think you went about it in a very good way, and I do think that you were pushing it beyond what the citizenship feels like you should be getting. Also, the qualifications for being on the council is only that you're 21 years old and that you reside in the city for 12 months. It says nothing about education. We're a city with about 52% people already have some kind of college degree, but the other 48% don't. And I certainly don't want people to think, I've read comments that makes you, we're looking for a more educated populace, or we're looking for younger or whatever. We had a mayor that was 27 years old when he started on the council. I worked with a council member that was 27 years old when he started on the council. Granted, I was 50 years old, but I didn't think I was that ancient either. I think we do a really good job of representing the public. And I don't want to think that somebody goes into this job because they're looking at how much money they'll make. And especially when I know that we're already compensating well above what's average for our own size of a community. So, that, those are some concerns of mine. And I did want to share one thing. I think I told you that my husband's first salary was, what did I say, $680, and that what mine had gone to at the end of 2019 was $1,890. It wasn't something that I was looking at. I never even really knew what my compensation was. But anyway, we want people to be servant leaders, obviously. And we do want people that care about the community. And I know that you all do, and I want it to be continuing to be that way. But I would like to say that everything that was removed, I would like very much to see you consider to put that back on your agenda tonight and rescind. That would mean that you would be going back to only making $5,440 a year. You would be docked for not attending a meeting, and that you would receive your pay quarterly as it has been for many, many years. And the filing fee, by the way, hasn't gone up in over 30 years. And I, one more thing I want to share. I realize how crazy the compensation is around the state of Kansas for cities. I cannot believe that the city of Prairie Village is compensated $1 a year. $1, mayor and council members. So is Mission Hills. Talk about a wealthy community. They've got plenty of money, but they're only paying their people $1 a year. That's crazy, too. I also think that Derby should be paying more, but that's not up to me to decide. We are paying you more for you all. I also think our website ought to actually tell somebody. I did a lot of searching, and it's like, you can't find that anywhere. Nobody knows your compensation. Nobody talks about it. Most people don't run thinking about money. They want to serve the community. So, if you were going to change something, you did it at a bad time, too, because everybody that would have run has to have already filed by June 2, and that is over with. And now we look at another two years before anybody can run to try to undo what was done. So, I am asking you again, I would hope that you will consider putting this back on your agenda and putting it back the way it was before your last meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Hale, can I ask you how many years you served?
17, and my husband served four full years and then another year and a half as a replacement during that whole recall thing that went on back in 2000 or 2001. So, between the two of us, 23 years of service. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. I appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I got my mic turned off. Please state your name, ma'am, okay?
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name is Sherry Geisler, and I have lived in Andover since 1993. I did watch the July 29, 2025 City Council meeting, and which you voted yourselves 100% pay raise. I was shocked and extremely disappointed to see this action taken. It was apparent to me that the community service and representation of your constituents had been forgotten. This was the same service opportunity that you were elected to do. The job description hasn't changed. Some of the City Council members' comments to justify the successive pay raise struck me wrong. Number one, one of the comments, "We need younger people involved." Well, you were elected to represent all of the city of Andover, not just the younger people. So, both life experience and history are great assets for representation. Number two, we can't get people involved if we don't pay them more. And like Caroline had said, you're doing it for the wrong reason. This is a community service that you want to come in and represent the constituents of Andover. If you're doing it for the pay, you're doing it for the wrong reason. Number three, we do so much more than previous councils due to the increased population. It takes more time. The job essentially is the same. You still have police, fire, the budget, all the same things. You just have more people. If you want to look at it that way, then saying we have more people, then you know the wastewater plant's going to have to expand, the police is going to have to expand, all of those things have to expand, and you're choosing your pay over the citizens of Andover. All jobs require that you stay current and up to date. You don't get paid more for doing your job. You know, the non-government jobs, you have to stay current. That's just part of the job. Again, the City Council should be a reflection and represent our community. You don't just serve the young people, you serve the rich, the poor, the retired, the fixed incomes, and the working class. Looking at the constituents, how many of them are able to give themselves a pay raise, let alone 100% pay raise? Going back to my comments about the assets of life experience and history, I'm reminded of something I learned from Les Mangas about an approximate 20-year turnover. He was, of course, speaking of neighborhoods, but I think it applies to many things in our community. This is where history plays an important part. It was about 20 years ago, 2001, I think, that Andover City Council got a little full of themselves in self-serving and forgot their constituents. The Andover residents became aware and were not happy, and a recall was initiated. The council at that time were bullying the mayor and city administrator to serve themselves. This resulted in four of the six members gone. If not aware of history, it can be repeated due to lack of awareness. Finally, in regards to the data, data can be interpreted in many different ways, depending on or due to perspective, human bias, and interpretation, et cetera. We are Andover. We don't have to conform or emulate other communities. The facts are simple. This council voted to give themselves 100% pay raise. To put it in perspective, and I'm not as kind as Caroline was, to put it in perspective, the city's website reports the median income of $166,676 annually. The closest I could find to an average or mean income was the per capita income, which was $37,325. Now, I'm not a numbers person like Councilmember Hamilton is, but I calculated that to be the median income of a person here is $51.29 an hour. A per capita hourly income is $17.94 an hour for your constituents. I then calculated the City Council annual pay, which, like I said, Caroline considered a little bit more than I do. But you have three meetings. You have two City Council meetings and a workshop. That has been as long as I can remember. So, if you calculate that out, that's $983 a month for three meetings, which comes out to $327.27 per meeting. Again, the mayor and the staff try to keep them around an hour. It's up to you guys on how long the meetings last. If you get a lot of socializing, if you get a lot of, you know, discussion that really could have been done before your meeting, you may run over. But essentially, it comes down to $327.27 an hour. Correct me if I'm wrong, but your three meetings can be longer or shorter depending on you. I understand that some meetings are longer, some shorter, but again, it's up to you. Granted, there are liaison jobs included, and some of those jobs are real challenging. But you should have been aware of that when you ran for this position. But you should have been aware of that when you ran for this position. Let's see here. Really can't justify to me or the Andover residents as being paid nine hundred and eighty-three dollars a month for three meetings. In conclusion, I hope you can see some reason and common sense in how inappropriate this pay raise you've given yourselves really is and decide tonight to vote to void it in the best interest of your constituents. If this is too much of a job for a reasonable amount of pay, you can resign. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I wouldn't, did, you served on the city council?
Yes, I did.
How many years did you serve?
Well, I was on planning and zoning initially, and then when all of the recall happened in two thousand one, I was appointed, and then I ran, I don't know how many elections, two or three probably, roughly seventeen years, maybe? Something like that.
That's right.
So I, I started out, quite honestly, at twenty-five dollars a meeting. And I just thought, you know, it's community service, twenty-five dollars covers childcare. You know, I'm not here to make a money, not here, I mean, most people on the council, they either are self-employed, they have a job, they're retired, you know, there's, the council is to represent the community. You've got all different kinds, but I just think, really, you cannot lose sight of who you're representing, you know? Anybody else have a question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with something to add, like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Connie Minton. I have something just very short. I represent our Andover Senior Center, and I just wanted you to know that we need you. We need all of you to help support us to get bigger buildings. We have outgrown that building by double, triple. But we really need your help, and that's, I thank you, everybody, for what you do for us. Chief and Fire Department, Mayor Price, thank you. Thank you very much.
Can you tell me how many people you serve a day? It's an astronomical number. Is that in-house or deliveries or both?
That's in-house.
And I work in the kitchen. I know how hard that is for us to do it as a volunteer service, and I wouldn't do it any other way. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
It needs to be recorded for the.
Yeah, we have, you have to go, hon, because we have to record it. It's a public hearing.
If you could go to the microphone, that's the only way to pick up.
I can get you.
We might.
I'm sorry.
I'm also nine in, so I get all the perks you can use. You know, I have a question. How come at concerts, the here, the loudness just blows you out of the, but here, I can hardly hear? Anyway.
Can you state your name for us, please?
I am proud to say that I'm starting my twenty-first year in Andover. And, oh, my name's Helen Martin. Everybody knows me.
I know your name. I know your name. We have to get, we have to get it on the record, hon. I know your name.
Anyway, I'm sorry, my twenty-first year, and I started at the Senior Center the very first few weeks that I came. And let me tell you, we have grown. We have already put up an addition. And now we are at the point where we are bursting at the seams. And we really need another one, except that I want you to make it close to where I live. I only have sixty, I only have sixty steps to walk to go to the Senior Center. But anyway, I am very proud to be a citizen of Andover. And I'll tell you, the Fire Department and the Police Department have been nothing, nothing but A-one plus for us. And they have treated us, and we have wonderful cooks. But most of all, we have the most wonderful director at the Senior Center, Margaret Gibbons, and she has given us all she can give of her life for us, and we appreciate it. But we would really appreciate seeing if we can't have a bigger place because we need it. And, oh, I don't get to address the other situation. I just have a question.
Yes, you can ask. You can absolutely address it, hon.
Has the Police Department or the Fire Department received a hundred percent compensation raise?
I'm sorry, it's Caroline Hale again, same address. I did want to say something else, that when you're talking about compensation, I cannot tell you how thrilled I was to, to receive an iPad from the city. And I probably ninety-five percent of that use is my personal use when I was on the city council. So that's another perk you all have. You get two free tickets to concerts. Every concert that goes on here in the city, you get two free tickets to it. And on your workshop, you're provided a fantastic meal. I was stunned when they were doing that. But these are the kinds of things that the staff has done for this. And so as council members, besides the compensation you receive, which sure, we can talk that you want, it could be more, it could be less, but I think it's a pretty good, sweet job that you have here in this city. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I've never sat on up here or anything, but I would like to express the, the, the roads out here are getting so bad. And I noticed on Central going east that they made strips and took the cones down. That still makes that car of mine rattle, makes all kinds of noise. I'd like to know where does some of this money go and why is things not getting fixed? And the concert, I live in the trailer court. I hear everything from the park. My next question is, why did we put that building in front of the screen over there at the park? I'm kind of concerned about it because I loved the lodge that you all had. And so I understand that it was unsafe. But my problem is, why do the people in Andover have to suffer by hearing it because it goes past ten o'clock sometimes? And I, I'm a light sleeper, and I would like to have my sleep on the weekend. And I'd like to see that the roads would get prepared a little bit better than what they are. I don't understand the stripes that we have out there.
So, so they, actually, the mayor of Andover is putting a message in the, in the utility bill this month. That is a temporary solution, just the first stage of taking care of that road. And next summer, the roads will be redone. The Director of Public Works has a program, and he goes through the roads via the program so that, it's a very good process, but unfortunately, it's part of the, preparing the road for the work that will be done next summer to make them what Andover expects to have. So.
Okay, I'll be looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Ma'am, we didn't get your name.
Oh.
Chris Smith, did you get that, Dana?
First off, Dwight Lennox, nineteen thirty-six North Northridge Street, just moved here about a year ago. I had the pleasure of coming to the Andover Senior Center with my mom and her husband and playing bingo and meeting all these individuals and then doing a lot of volunteer work with them, and then next thing you know it, I find out that I'm the new cook and, you know, somebody's been missing from calling bingo a couple of times and everything.
Put me on the calendar, Margaret.
This buck, right? Got to meet you early this week. I guess the biggest thing I look at, I'm, I'm a nurse by trade, surgical assistant. I've done a lot of things and everything. I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't go into the stuff about getting paid and things like that. But I do know, since I've been there, the Senior Center has, especially with me cooking all the time now, I mean, there's, there's a lot going on. I'm hoping everybody is, I hoping we're having an increase in, you know, people coming in because of my cooking, you know, my grandma would be proud. So I guess one of the biggest things is having the ability to, you know, get some funding, you know, anything like that, just, just something to, to help out with everybody. I mean, if you guys, please, I, I challenge every one of you to come in and have a meal with us, hang out, meet the people that I have met, and just, just get to know their story and, and everything else. It's, I've, I've never been a part of anything like this. You know, this is the first time I've ever stood in front of the city council ever in my entire life. I, I might not be the, the newest person at the Senior Center, but I guarantee I'm the youngest member of the Senior Center at fifty-four in two days. And, you know, I mean, if there's something that can come about with us here, you know, and just a little bit of something here, a little bit of something there, because, yeah, literally, especially Fridays with bingo, especially when the mayor decides to show up, you know, you know, to call a few games. Maybe, maybe you guys can come in, call a, call a couple of Friday bingo games and hang out. That way, we get to know you guys as well, and then you get to know us as well. Have a good meal and hang out. You came in, I haven't seen you call a bingo game and, you know.
Thursday at ten o'clock this week.
He's a police officer. Of course he brings the donuts.
Sir, I didn't catch your last name. Could you?
Lennox, L-E-N-O-X. Dwight Lennox, L-E-N-O-X. So, you know, I, and that's the biggest thing I sit there and look at. I mean, it's, like I said, I've been here for a year now. We came, my wife and I moved here from Colorado last July, and, I mean, Andover is, it's just a, it's just a wonderful place to be in. You know, and I just, I would like to be, have you guys be a part of us a little bit more as we be a part of you guys a little bit more. And let's figure out something that can happen and, and help, you know, all these individuals that we take care of at that Senior Center, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Email Michael Homer Henry at k s dot gov. He would be a great bingo caller.
Sorry about that. No, I'd be, I'd be happy to call bingo.
I think he'd volunteer. So, all right, anyone else would like to, uh-oh. You got two and a half minutes, sir.
That's fine. I don't need long. Mayor, city council, staff, my name's Scott Rackley. I live at six three zero East Shade. So for those that are here tonight, I was at the meeting two weeks ago when this all went down. My personal opinion, it's public service. I do HOA presidency, not for the money. I do it for the people in my neighborhood. If I were to ever get to run for city council, barring my wife lets me, I'm not worried about the pay. I do it for the citizens. But what I do want to say is, is this, I'm also a Prab member. I get involved. And I get that sometimes we're limited to our mobilities and scheduling and whatnot to be able to serve. However, I will tell you, Paul Wimmer goes above and beyond, and I guarantee you that's not calculated into his three meetings a month pay. You want to talk about budget meetings that go four and five hours long? I guarantee you those aren't calculated into that. Hear me out when I say I'm not for the raise. However, if the council and the city chooses to compensate, you guys voted these people in, you guys are the ones that gave these people the power to, to okay that kind of stuff. If we feel like we're doing it wrong, the election's coming up. You've got three open seats, four people running. My plor, my, I implore you, I can't stand that word, but I implore you to do your research on these candidates coming up. I can promise you, school board, you don't get paid for that. That's a tailwhupping. I tried getting involved into that. Here's where I fit in. I get involved in the city and I do what I can. Do I think that you guys deserve a hundred percent pay raise? Well, maybe some of y'all, but at the end of the day, you guys collectively have talked about this, you voted on it. We're here, like, do you, do you go back? I don't, I don't know how that works. Legality purposes? I don't know if you can. I, it's, it's above my pay grade. But at the end of the day, do you deserve a little bit of extra compensation for the four and the five hours? The days of PTO, you have to take off to go on some God-bidden-for-sake and retreat? And spend how many hours at those retreats? Jenny, how, how long's that retreat?
Are you talking about our budget meetings or onboarding?
Just the retreat in general.
We do a governing body onboarding that's a full Saturday, nine to two or something like that.
So we're looking eight hours. I guarantee you that's not included into that. Once again, hear me out when I say I'm not for the pay increase, but if the people we voted in are gonna make those kind of changes, it's not on nobody but us because we voted them in. I remember voting for Mayor Price. I mean, I don't always see that in I, but you know what? At the end of the day, I think he's got the citizens of Andover in his forefront, just like I know Paul Wimmer does. Mike Warrenton, you took two, three years ago and approved a, a street closing that was denied. Jody, I ain't got to know you really well. Homer? Man, I see you out all over the place. Like, you've come to the neighborhood and tried to help solve some solutions. I guarantee you that wasn't part of your pay either. Phil, you're a numbers guy, so I know you know that none of this stuff matches up. All I'm trying to say is, guys, we come up to this podium and we want to talk about how we think it's ridiculous, whatever word you want to use, but keep in mind, we're the ones that voted these people in.
Can you, for, for the public, can you explain what Prab is, the acronym?
Prab is Parks, Recreation, and Advisory Board. And for those that don't know, we get to come up with some ideas, and then the city council gets to shoot it down. Typically how it works.
Thank you, Scott.
The lodge, we had, we had a really good deal going there. Rick Lansworth and Daniel. I guarantee you their pay don't justify what they do at the end of the day. But it's, it's a, it's a thankless job. Being a city council member, I know it's a thankless job. That's why my wife won't let me do it, but like I said, end of the day, we voted these people in. We're gonna vote the next three people in, and you got four running, so do your research is all I can say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak tonight? All right. How many are you, there's a lot of folks here and it's not my birthday. So I'm curious, how many are you, how many of you are here for the, the compensation? No, how many of you are, no, how, how many are here just for the, for that reason, for that item? All right. No one else wants to come to the mic? It's the last chance.
Thank you, city council for serving.
All right. This time I'll.
You have to appreciate you all, but we all want to be fair and check things out better.
All right. Thank you. At this time, public forum's closed and I'll ask council if anyone would like to make a motion to do what the audience has asked tonight. Nope. There you have it. So there'll be no rescinding the, the pay tonight, but I appreciate you all coming.
Have a question. Is it something that we could take back to workshop to discuss? Or does it have to be?
Ask Jenny.
Does it have to be a vote or can we take it back to workshop? Or does it have to be a vote tonight to rescind?
Since, since you take action by vote, I believe they'd have to take action by vote to change it. It doesn't have to be tonight.
You can take it. Any action at any regular city council meeting that is permitted by law and that would be permitted by law.
To take it back to workshop?
You can't make a decision in the workshop because we publish that.
But we can discuss it.
You can discuss it as much as you'd like, anytime you would like.
All right. So we don't need to do anything tonight to discuss it future in a workshop? Is that correct? Okay.
So you could ask to put it on the next workshop or something to discuss?
Correct.
The, the plan didn't take effect, right? Until January 1st. So we essentially have three months-ish to discuss and, and bring it back. So.
So, all right. So that's a, so if you, if you don't, so what Jody's asking, if we can take this and, and put it back in the workshop and discuss it further and see if we can't come to another solution. All right. So I appreciate, can you, did you hear me all right? Okay. And I appreciate you all being here and, and, and folks from senior center, thank you very much for, for what you do. Margit.
We're coming back on the night.
Oh, you are? So, so correct me if I'm wrong, but Margit had a tremendous opportunity to make a whole lot more money than she's making at the senior center. And she said, no, I love my people and I'm staying here. So I commend you for that and a lot of people don't know it, but I know it. And, and so it's, it's worth stating that appreciate how much you love and care for not only the senior citizens, but the, the town of Andover. Thank you, ma'am.
Andover's the best.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to move on and the next consent agenda.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I guess what I'd first, I think we need to go back to six to accept the agenda, even though we modified it a little bit. So I guess I would move to accept the modified agenda that we just did.
Okay. What's that?
Second.
Second. You all right? JT? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Homer. Thank you. All right.
Anything for you, mayor.
Pardon me?
I said anything for you.
All right. So dang it, Homer.
Consent agenda.
So I'm at, so with the consent agenda, would you need to vote?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda items 9.1 through 9.2 as presented.
Anyone?
Second.
Jody seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. And for those of you that, that don't, don't know, you do not have to stay all night long to talk on the mic. So we won't be insulted if you leave. All right. All right. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
15 minutes?
All right. The next item is 10. I'll wait just a minute.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, sir. So I'm going to take just one second because we got young folks sitting in front row, front row here. This is the way government works. And so even though two weeks ago we didn't agree, our system does work. So pay attention to local government because it has more impact on your day-to-day life than the federal government. If you like your nice parks, your nice streets, your safe community, police department, fire department, the municipality is, local government's where your life is most impacted day-to-day. So, and it works the way it's supposed to and tonight is another fine example of how local, local government works. And if you'd ever like me to come to your school and talk to you about it, I'd be glad to. Okay. Thank you for being here. All right. The next one is city, city attorney bond counsel engagement letter and 10-1 and Jenny will talk to us about this.
Mr. Mayor and council, you received some correspondence from me last week indicating that there had been a change in Mr. Klaas's law firm. He is now with Spencer Fane. As you're all familiar, public may not be, the city attorney is an appointed position that is appointed by the mayor annually, second meeting in January. And so this change, this letter of engagements, which is the firm that the engagement letter is with, both, both for city attorney services as well as for bond counsel services, we wanted to put this early on the agenda because you do have some decisions related to bonds later in the agenda. That is all I really wanted to address, except for the fact that the terms are the same as the engagement letter with the previous law firm. Mr. Klaas is here. He certainly can speak for himself. If you have any questions related to any part of this change.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Does that, does that change anything in regards to the previous bonds? Will we need to be doing anything there or does that affect that?
No, as bond counsel, we issue a, an opinion that authorizes the bonds to be sold and issued at the end and those opinions are all still good. One thing that will happen after the change of engagement is all those files will be moved to my office. So in the event there are questions about any of those bond issues, if staff needs them answered, everything will be within my reach like it was before.
And then we do this letter if, if we, the city council choose to accept you again or do we need to do a reappointment this meeting or anything?
No, I'm, I'm the city attorney.
Okay.
And, and so I just, I just don't work at the same place I used to two weeks ago.
Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the engagement letter and authorize the mayor to sign the same as well as authorize the city administrator to request the transfer of files and sign related documents.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Andover Business Improvement Grants, Part Two and 11-1, and Julie will speak to us about this.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, what I have for you today is our, yeah, like the mayor said, Part Two of our Andover Business Improvement Grant Awards. You all approved the first slate of awards previously this year back in May. The committee that makes the decisions on the Andover Business Improvement Grant Awards wanted to give some more time to some of our applicants, since we still wanted to award them something, but just needed some more materials for their application together. So we've got that together for two more applicants now for Bark 44 in the amount of $9,300 and Jayhawk Landscaping in the amount of $4,872.61. I do have a representative here from Bark 44 to get a pretty big check. Unfortunately, Jayhawk Landscaping, their representative is out of state. So we will take a picture with him when he gets back.
And so, pardon me, I can't remember. I used to be on that. So do, how much, do we do one time? So we'll, we'll match whatever they do. Can you explain it to us?
Sure. So we ask that applicants get an estimate from a professional for whatever work that is that they're wanting to do. And then the city will generally match about half of their estimate.
Okay.
And it's usually a reimbursement to the applicant.
After the, after the work's done. And it used to be they had to have it in January. Is that correct or is that different now? No?
They usually have until the end of the year. They usually have until the end of the year.
Okay.
To complete the work, yeah.
I'm sorry. It's been a minute since I was on that, that board. You're on that?
Yeah. I mean, Phil and I, Julie, can you, how long is the application product window open?
We have it open for, I want to say it's about a month initially. In this case, we gave another 60 days after we made our first slate of decisions for the applicants that we felt needed some more materials to do so.
Perfect. Thank you.
And it can be used for signage, bushes?
Right. The intent, originally it was for properties along Andover Road, but we've expanded it. It's for aesthetic improvements, updating the exteriors of buildings. Signage is a great example. In this case, Bark 44 is, there's a few site improvements to the building and a new sign. Jayhawk Landscaping had a pretty in-depth kind of remodel on the exterior of the building that they were able to mostly perform themselves, given that they're a company that can do that kind of thing. So it is a lot of facelifts for the community to make things look nicer.
And essentially, unless we've changed it a little bit, it's, it's primarily in the neighborhood revitalization program area, plus or minus, or?
Not necessarily. We don't restrict the area that applicants come from. Like I said, we used to focus on Andover Road specifically, but in recent years we've expanded that to beautify other parts of the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to point out too, you know, when I, I had a, someone told me about a great book to read and one of the chapters discussed supporting local, local business or local businesses, but also new and old businesses. And I think if this should pass when we vote, this would be a great example of how we embracing a new business to Andover with Bark 44 and then also I guess a more senior business in Andover. Jayhawk Landscaping has been in Andover for
30 years?
Over 30, 30 years or three decades, depending on how you want to look at it. So I just think this is a great example of the Andover Road Improvement, Business Improvement Grant initially was the, you know, was the term, but we've expanded it over the years to do things off of Central. In this case, Bark 44 technically isn't on Andover Road, but that's why we've called it the Business Improvement Grant and have expanded it off Andover Road to things like Central and that kind of stuff. So I really think it's a good program. I think it's great for the city to get out and do this with the businesses and we'll see how it goes, Missy.
One of the examples that we've done is the only one off the top of my head I can think of is the, when Tim Buck Two did their fence around the outside area.
Yeah, we partnered with Point Nine is the most, I think, recent one. You know, we've partnered with a, with a variety of businesses over the years. Some of them, like you said, are, are the signs. So you might not see the sign change from yellow to new, but you actually, when you see a sign redone, it, it pops and it makes the businesses look good around it. So.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve, I move to accept the Andover Business Improvement Grant Committee recommendations for awarding remaining grant funds to two additional projects in the following amounts, $9,300 to Bark 44 and $4,872.61 to Jayhawk Landscaping.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Oh, how do we, yeah, let's, how do we do this?
Julie's over there. Do you want to go over there? Missy, you want to come up here and bring your family up? Come on, guys. Can we wake the fourth one up? Sorry, sweetie. I know it's past your bedtime. That's tomorrow's first day of school, right, guys? Can you move, Julie, can you guys move forward and then let, let them slip in behind you guys? Hide the mayor, mayor as much as you can.
Bye. I, I thought you children were here for a civic class or something.
Thanks, guys.
All right. All right. 12-1, bid award Posties Patch Sewer. And Rick Landreth is going to speak to us about this.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council, in your pack is a location on this. Some of you may, may or may not recall this, a lot of this action was taken back oh, close to a year ago to get to this point and they're now moving forward with the sewer. It's a, basically they're taking that lot, that area and it's been plowed into three tracks and they're extending sewer across there to, to service those. When the work was being laid out as far as survey work and such, a joining property owner did approach and ask about getting to be a part of that. Instead of repetitioning, they were given a portion of what that would cost to extend the work over to them and they're just going to pay cash down on that. So they won't be a part of the petition, but they are going to pay in advance cash before we'll do the work. And then the remaining tracks are part of the petition and the project less the money is to be paid in front will fall within the petition limits for this work that has previously been approved for, to go out to this point. Did, so the bids did meet the petition limits when you take that into account. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer those. It's a pretty small job.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Rick. On the property of the east, they don't have sewer now then?
So the house on the corner has sewer and then there's like a creek that runs in between that divides that little piece of property there and the sewer cannot get from across that creek area to the lot over there. And he wants to put something over there. There's like, right now, there's like a garage. It's kind of an older garage. So he wants to have the ability to make improvements over there. So that would be forthcoming, whatever would need to happen if there's a lot split or something.
So essentially like putting a bathroom on the garage?
I think he's potentially looking at building a, a new small residence over there.
Okay. And is that the, is that, that's the Red Bud Trail to the end of the south, right?
Correct.
All right, cool.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And, sorry, I do have one more question, Rick. If, if that neighbor to the east had not been able to pay for it all upfront, could we have set up something so that we, since it's one project, could we have done a special for that address or whatever if we needed to?
It probably would have involved us going back and doing a repetition, you know, going through that process because it would have changed. You would add a property into, into that, special assessments and such, just to keep it on track and not delay it because this came up pretty late in the game. This is what was chosen.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the lowest qualified bid from McCullough Excavation Incorporated, Wichita, Kansas, in the not to exceed amount of $38,070 and reject all other bids and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for sanitary sewer system improvements to serve Posties Patch Edition.
Second.
Second.
Paul? Uh, any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Thirteen one, GAD Fireworks Display, and Daniel is going to talk to us about this evening. How you doing, Daniel?
Doing well. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. For your consideration this evening is just the approval of use of fireworks in the park, Central Park here for Greater Andover Days. The committee has been at work, uh, putting together all the pieces and a fireworks display is going to be part of the festival again this year. Attached in your packet is the fire department review from your fire marshal. The required insurance certif, uh, and the, and the operator's license is also in there. Andy with Astro Enterprises, he's done some shows with us before. He's going to be the pyrotechnician again this, this time. And new to the process this year, the, the required road closure in order to handle the Yorktown closure has gone through the internal process with, with police chief, fire chief, and director of public works for their evaluation. So all you're considering tonight is actually the use of the, of the fireworks. Same time, same place as normal on the Saturday night, eight forty-five, but I'd be happy to answer any of the questions if you have them.
Anyone?
Uh, sure. Awesome. Daniel, we always have a, I guess, I've, maybe I've never gone to the fireworks show, but we've always had one for GAD.
Always is a strong word. I think it's.
In the most recent years.
Almost all the time.
Uh, weather permitting. Sorry, Joe. Thank you. That's why. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the discharge of fireworks in Andover Central Park from approximately eight forty-five PM to nine fifteen PM-ish on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five for Greater Andover Days.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Excuse me. Fourteen one, South Andover Road Maintenance, and Rick will speak to us about this.
Mr. Mayor and Council, some of you probably remember last year or, yeah, last year approached council, get permission to piggyback on top of a project that Butler County Public Works was doing where they were widening the road to make it a little safer and then adding a two-foot gravel shoulder on the side. And then they were, uh, did a scarify project where they kind of scarify. It's a heating process. And then they were going to come back and do a, a new street ceiling later. And when we, they got done with the work last year, they didn't get it all done. And so now the new amount that we would need to come up with has went up just a little bit, but really what's driving that increased cost is, quite frankly, when they charged us for and gave us the cost of cement before, I don't think they realized that we had actually annexed the park south of one hundred and thirtieth. So now they're redoing their estimates and also wanting to check to see if we're still wanting to go ahead and proceed with the ceiling. So what they'll come through is they're going to seal that surface off and re-stripe it. It's going to be, I have it as an increase of about fifty-seven thousand. I've added a little bit in there. So if it comes, because they haven't been to work yet. So if it comes in just a little bit higher, we don't have to come back and ask for more funds to do the work. I would strongly encourage you to do this. We will not be able to do this. That section any cheaper ourselves and with contractor already coming in and doing it, it just times out better. That area inside there is a part that will get a new surface. It's, it's more of a ceiling surface, not a milliner or anything like that. It's more of a surface treatment, but it will, uh, extend the life of the roadway a fair, like, fair amount of time. So we strongly recommend it.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So fifty-seven, you know, versus eighty, that's what, twenty-three, you know, thousand difference? What would, in your, right?
Uh, well, it's basically fifty thousand dollars difference, but I rounded up when I did. When they, so they haven't given us a number. They just said, here's what this guy worked bid for last year and based on the square yardage and everything. We have about, they're ask, I mean, basically we're covering about another twenty-three percent more of square yardage because of the area added in south of one hundred and thirtieth. So that has a lot to do with the increase.
And if we didn't do anything here, didn't seal it, just kind of left it as is, what happens?
We'd be back sealing it ourselves and another, sooner than later. We would need to come back and do some sort of surface treatment to it. This will keep us from probably having to touch that street for another. We might do crack sealing on it, but we probably wouldn't have to touch it for another eight years or so, depending on how it holds up. But yeah.
Eight?
Eight. And then we'd have to come back and do some sort of surface treatment to it.
Thanks, Rick.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to authorize the reimbursement of up to eighty thousand dollars to Butler County for roadway maintenance on South Andover Road.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Fifteen one, general obligation bonds, series A, twenty-five, public sale resolution. Matt is going to talk to us tonight. How you doing, my friend?
I'm doing very well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I'd like to thank you for leaving me at the end, or as I like to call the main event. We are, we are talking, we have two resolutions on. The first one, the first one is a resolution of the public sale created by people much smarter than me. But it is to authorize the city to sell a bond in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think this is the first time you've heard that amount, so it's detailed in the memo, but I did want to just kind of point out, it's about half the special assessments that we've been talking about already the last couple of months. And then the other half is the improvements of Yorktown from Central to Thirteenth. It's the city's portion of those improvements. So there are portions of that project that are petitioned and those will be back depending on when the project is completed. But the.
Sorry, Matt, did you say twelve thousand or twelve million?
Twelve million eight hundred and fifty thousand. Sorry.
Thank you.
If I said it wrong? Uh, but those, the, the Yorktown portions will be paid from the Street Improvement Fund and the Water Fund for their respective parts. And the rest will be funded from special assessments. Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I mean, Matt, is there anything unusual about this bond right now? Okay. I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale of twelve million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the Series A twenty twenty-five general obligation bonds of the city of Andover, Kansas, and authorizing the city of Andover's bond counsel and financial advisor to prepare the necessary notices and documents to conduct, conduct such sale.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Fifteen two, public sale resolution of city temporary notice, series A, twenty twenty-five, and again, Matt will talk to us about this.
Thank you again. We are building a new wastewater treatment facility. It has a price tag of approximately forty-seven million dollars. And because we have that obligation, we do need to have the cash on hand to build it. So this is temporary financing to fill the gap between what we have saved and what we need to complete the project. And then after the project is completed, we will issue long-term financing.
Any questions?
And, and Matt, can you, uh, for the public, say how much we've already saved for the wastewater treatment plan?
Absolutely. We have in the neighborhood of fifteen million on hand. And then over the course of the next couple of years, while it's being built, we also are still collecting sewer fees, so that will grow a little bit between now and the time that we issue the long-term financing.
Perfect.
So kind of, kind of in line with what Homer's comment was here, I went and ran some numbers. So up until this date, I think, Matt, you said forty-seven million dollars. That's the largest expenditure the city has ever had in its history period. And so out of curiosity, I run numbers. So you said we've saved about fifteen million dollars. So I went and ran the math on how much that saves the citizens because we were able to save that fifteen million dollars. Kind of a concept that I didn't understand when I first got up here is the way that your utilities and specifically the wastewater operates is your utility billings have to offset, offset the cost of running that utility. So that was a little bit of a foreign concept for me at first, but after I ran all the numbers, saving fifteen million dollars, I had to make a couple of assumptions that this bond would be a twenty-year bond at four percent. We've saved the community by being able to save, build up that fifteen million dollars, roughly six million dollars of interest over the life of that loan. And so of course, in my head, I'm like, dang, that's a lot. But then I calculated for every million dollars that we could have saved more on top of it to go towards us, it would have saved us an additional roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the life of that loan. So it's just important to remember as, none of us know how long this treatment plant is going to last. Rick, you probably, you would agree. We have no idea. We, it's probably going to be somewhere in between twenty to thirty years. This one outlived its life substantially. We kind of got lucky there. But I'm looking forward into the future when the next one has to be built. The more that we're able to save towards that, we will save ourselves millions and millions of millions and of dollars in interest over the life of that bond. And again, the only person that wins from interest is either banks or the person holding the bond. The more we are able to save into the future for that, we don't have to pass that interest burden on those debt servicing fees onto the next generation of people that will come through Andover. So it was just, I thought it was important to run those numbers and see what that came out to be. So I know you appreciate that, Matt.
I sure do. Thank you very much.
That just, uh, to Phil's point, that just speaks to the quality of people we have across the board. Brian Walls, uh, does a fabulous job out there and that's why that plant lasts as long as it did. And, uh, staff puts these numbers together and they focus on all the stuff. So it just speaks to, like I say, across the board, what we have from, man, parks and recreation to streets and on and on and on. I could go on forever, but, uh, y'all make us look very good. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale of thirty-six million two hundred and thirty-five thousand in Series A twenty twenty-five temporary notes of the city of Andover, Kansas, and authorizing the city of Andover's bond counsel and financial advisor to prepare the necessary notices and documents to conduct such sale.
Second.
Any further questions? Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Member items, and I'll start with, uh, Councilman Wimmer.
Just real short, but just, um, I had a chance to listen to the, uh, the interview that Jenny and Kat did, um, on just discussing the upcoming concerts and, uh, city of Andover in general. And, um, I was just really impressed with how well you guys represented everything that we've done and thought sounded really good and appreciate you sharing that. Also, just, uh, you know, with that being said, we talk a lot about the amphitheater and, um, I think I was looking over, maybe it was the, uh, fire department's report or maybe police department, but it, it did make me think about how much of the time that not only the fire department and police department, but the city employees put into every concert and every event that we have going on there. And again, doesn't probably get called out enough. I just wanted to say thank you. You guys do a wonderful job. I've been able to attend a couple of those events and been extremely impressed.
Just wanted to, everyone to be aware that the army worms are out, so. They're eating up yards like crazy, so watch out for it. And, um, there's, uh, people who do that service or, um, I did it myself, so, but, um, please look out for that. Uh, they're out pretty bad right now.
Did it kill your whole yard?
No, but I mean, we caught it quick.
Good. They sure will.
I just want to say that we've got school starting this week, so please make sure you are aware. Watch your school zones. Watch for the buses when those stop signs go out. Make sure that you are stopping behind. We don't want to have any issues. And I know that police officers are going to be doing their job, which is keeping all of the kids and the people safe. So please keep that in mind. But school starting, I wish all the kids and teachers and faculty and staff a wonderful school year.
Thank you. I want to, uh, thank the, uh, I think it's Faith Lutheran Church for having me and the city's clerk out for lunch today and asking us a myriad of questions and, and they were pretty gentle on me, not so much on Dana. She's a, she tried to dominate the conversation, but you know me, I tried to dial her back a little bit, but no, thank you for going and more importantly, happy birthday. And, uh, we're very blessed to have you on staff.
You're up, bub.
Oh, uh.
You fall asleep?
Yeah, I mean, your speech was amazing. I just want to thank, thank all staff for what you do. You know, Rick, when we were talking about the wastewater and what Phil, Phil said too, I mean, that takes some forethought and, and staff is really good at that. So I appreciate that. And school zones, yeah, I saw, I saw them blinking yesterday and I was like, ah, man, we're back. But then my kids go to school, so it was like, awesome, school. And that starts tomorrow. So good luck to my kids, um, tomorrow.
Jody stole my thunder. I second what Jody said. If you're unfamiliar with, if it's a divided highway, not a divided highway, the police department put out a really good social media post about the rules depending on what type of road it is. Watch it if you're unfamiliar. They can be confusing depending on the scenario, but familiarize yourself with that so you don't get pulled over. That's all I got.
A good mayor probably would have put that in a mayor message. Yeah, let's do that. Okay. Alright, thank you. Um, staff, have anything you'd like to share? No? Alright, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you all.